And here's Ricky, once Ricky gets here, we'll start. Doesn't have nobody there. Okay, so are we ready and Zoom ready and all that good stuff? All right, at this time, we'll call the meeting to order if we can do the roll call.
Soon trustee Espinoza. Trustee Nguyen.
Here.
Trustee Hombachko.
Here.
Trustee Dawn Parker.
Here.
Trustee Prinsky. And trustee Moreno.
Okay, at this time, we'll go for a motion for adoption of the agenda. You see, we have 2.01 has some revisions of slides. Do we have a second? Any questions or comments? Okay, us the student trustee.
I.
The rest of us?
I.
I.
Great, and if we will have the pledge allegiance and if we can please rise, I will go ahead and lead it. Stay seated. Nope, I'm good. Thank you. At this time, do we have any public comments?
No public comment at this time.
No public comments, great. So we'll go ahead and move to informational proposed adopted budget presentation. Chancellor?
Yes, this is the what has become the second annual special session for the budget. Vice Chancellor Drinkwine and I decided that since fiscal issues were high priority, in fact, the top priority in terms of fiscal stability, that in between the the initial budget proposal from the governor, the final may revise, the final enacted budget, and then before the statutory requirement that requires the board to approve a formal budget for the year that's in September, that we would want to do a special dive into the broader fiscal issues of the district beyond just the the actual budget itself. And that's why, again, for me, it's important that we engage in the separate discussion and do a deeper dive on behalf of the board to ask questions and also for any of our employees and members of the public to know in a much greater detail than we'd have in the formal budget presentation. So with that as a reason for our special session, I will turn it over to Vice Chancellor Drinkwine.
Thank you so much. Before I begin, I want to express special thanks to our team here in District Fiscal Services. As you know, our former executive director of fiscal Daniela Thompson retired effective June 30th, well deserved after nearly 35 years of service to this district. What that meant was that we did have a pretty big hole in our district fiscal services and our district fiscal team really stepped up. They did a phenomenal job under difficult circumstances of people learning new roles and new tasks. And so I want to thank Purvie Shaw, our payroll manager, Eriselia Alvarez, our director of budgets, Steve Kim, our controller, John Erickson, our director of purchasing, Maridella Sero, our administrative assistant, Rosalie Triggs, my executive assistant. Every single person at the college's fiscal services, their team filled so many holes. They were so patient with our team as we responded a little bit slower than typical, were a little bit later than typical. And they themselves really filled a lot of those holes. So I want to thank each one of those vice presidents. So thank you, Vice President Nguyen, thank you, Vice President Pagel, and thank you, Vice President Hicks, and each one of their fiscal directors. This budget is was truly a collaborative collaborative and a collective effort from every person. So I really want to express my thanks. I also want to take this opportunity to present to you our new executive director of fiscal services here at the district office. And we have with us tonight Ms. Emily Day. And so I think we can really look forward to a much smoother process next year, having learned a lot of lessons this year and with new leadership in that position, understanding the process a lot more, particularly for myself, having done things that I haven't done in several years. It's been lessons learned and I think we'll have a much better process for it. And with that, we're going to get right into the presentation. We're going to talk a little bit first about our prior year recap, talk a little bit about going back pre pandemic, but not too much, but to set the stage. We're going to talk about the state's enacted budget. We're going to talk about the district's budget, our fiscal stability plans with our colleges' presentation, and then we're going to have some concluding thoughts. You're going to see some themes running throughout the presentation. The state is challenged with their budget. The district is challenged with our budget, with an imbalance between our ongoing unrestricted expenditures with our ongoing unrestricted revenues that results in deficit spending. You'll see that some restricted and auxiliary operations may require contributions from unrestricted general funds and that our fiscal stability plan has been critical and is continuing to be critical to solving that deficit spending. So as we look at our history, you can see that prior to the pandemic, this district did experience deficit spending. You can see that in 1718, 1819, and in 1920. And that's important because that demonstrates that structural budget imbalance. Beginning in the pandemic, and it seems to be contrary to what you would believe to occur during a pandemic. It certainly surprised all of us that all districts in California experienced surpluses. And that's because of one time influxes of revenue. It came primarily from federal sources through the Higher Education Emergency Relief Fund. Even though that was a restricted resource, it backfilled unrestricted revenues. It also provided overall funding for indirect costs. It just really gave us this influx of revenues. But surprisingly, our economy outperformed expectations in strange ways. It certainly did not benefit our lowest wage earners, certainly did not. But we had much more revenues at the state level and the federal level than we expected. So it gave us a boon. We also, starting in 2020, got the benefit of the emergency conditions allowance, which allowed our district to get paid at 201920 enrollment levels instead of our actual. So that was a boon. And then, beginning in 202223, we got augmented SCIF rates. So all of these one time events improved our situation. And on top of that, in anticipation of worsening conditions and anticipation of our district having suffering economic times, the district enacted a hiring freeze, combined with retirement incentives, both of which produced salary savings, some of which, many of which were ongoing, many of which were one time. As an example, with the hiring freeze, it takes us much longer to recruit and hire, generating much more one time salary savings than is typical just because we have additional processes. All hiring has to be approved by chancellor's cabinet now, for instance. That means that time period for hiring is elongated, generating much more salary savings, all of which allowed us to avoid deficit spending. So as we continued to project deficit spending, but continued to solve deficit spending, a large part of that was the development of the fiscal stability plan beginning in 202324. The singular goal was to align ongoing expenditures with ongoing revenues to eliminate deficit spending and to ensure the district has a stable fiscal condition. We did that by developing this multi-year plan with actions going across all levels. And when we looked back at that time period, you can see that collectively we had solutions totaling 10 million in 2324 and 10, nearly 10 million 2425. Now, we're going to go into a deep dive in the fiscal stability plan when we talk about our current year budget. And the colleges will have an opportunity to present that plan and talk about forward looking what they're planning on and talk a little bit about what they've achieved so far. But as we're doing this prior year recap, I wanted to mention these amounts because that in part helped us avoid that deficit spending. I also want to mention that while we captured these improvements, many things happened in those same years that offset some of these improvements. So for instance, in 2425, earlier in that year, we were projecting revenues at a higher level because the COLA had been projected to be higher. Subsequently, the COLA came in lower and countered some of those improvements. So there were some offsetting actions, but without these actions, we would have been far worse off. And so when we look at the immediately prior year, you can see the impact of many of those actions in 2425 that I mentioned. Nearly $10 million of improvements credited towards 2425. And you can see that when we adopted the budget, we projected an ending fund balance of just over $66 million. And by time we concluded the year, we had 75.9 rounding up to $76 million, an improvement of about $10 million. You have in your appendices a new slide. So this is one of the slides that was added to you. It is the very last slide. And so I am going to forward to the very last slide in this presentation so I can walk you through that. And I thank you for your patience with the addition of these new slides and the corrected slides. It is part of the challenges we experienced over the summer. And I will confess that it is also the result of our could you help me out there Ricky and relaunch the presentation? Thank you. It is also the result of my forwarding to Ricky the wrong file yesterday. So I will own that that was my mistake yesterday as well. But this slide will detail for you exactly the progression of changes over the course of the year in 2425 and what led to that $10 million change. And I think it's important to know that we do recognize improvements as we go through the course of the year, that it is not magic that occurs just at the end of the year that we have improvement. We do track at each quarter. We are required to provide to you, the board, quarterly updates on our projections. And we do provide this chart, we call it our waterfall chart. It gets more detailed as the year goes on. So at the first quarter, we showed you this chart from the first green bar to the second green bar. And we showed you that at that point in time, we had identified an additional $1.7 million in salary savings that had not been budgeted. So it could have been identification of additional position eliminations, identification of new one time salary savings that perhaps we saw, okay, we had more separations. So we're anticipating more one time salary savings, but a full combination of those. We also received $1 million in STIRS refunds. That happens every year. We just don't know what the value is, so we can't budget it. Some years it's $2 million, some years it's $1 million, some years it's $500,000. So not knowing that amount, we wait till we get it. This year is $1 million. We had some other increases that were negligible, but we reflected them there. And then the health benefits actually came in a little bit higher than we budgeted. That was half a million dollars. So you can see at first quarter, the net change was we projected our ending fund balance increase by about $2 million. Second quarter, we projected another increase of just under $1 million, primarily from some more salary savings. Plus, we projected that we were going to get more in non resident tuition, offset by some higher utilities. Then you saw a lot more activity in third quarter. In third quarter, we knew that the SCIF revenue deficit was going to disappear. We also knew we were going to have half a million dollars more in salary savings. We do really good in recognizing salary savings as we go. We know that's really important for our stakeholders. So we do really good every quarter identifying more salary savings. We also had various small pockets of additional revenue increases. Each one is just a little bit. But individually, they're very small, but collectively, they add up to more. And some interest income. When we say contractual obligation savings, that means we're closing out POs or we're closing out contracts that originally might have said, we're going to use 100 hours of this one contract and we only use 25 and we closed it up. That's what that means. And they add up to a lot because we have a lot of contracts. And then we get to fourth quarter and you see some bigger things. We had a prior year adjustment for a negative $1.5 million in lottery. We had to transfer $3 million to health and welfare. I'm going to give you more information about that a little bit later. We recognized some savings from our fiscal stability plan. Part of that $10 million we recognized in the fourth quarter. We had a collection of other one time savings. That collection of 2.1 million came from a whole host of different things that we saved on. The same with the one time revenues. Each one of those things was not a lot individually, but district wide, they added up to a lot. We had more interest income. And then lastly, if you recall, this past year, we started participating in that new broader part time health benefit program. We were wary about budgeting that reimbursement. Guess what? We're getting fully reimbursed. We got the first 80% this summer. We're going to get the next 20% next February. We got it all. So for 2526, we budgeted the whole 100%. So we're really happy we got it all. The colleges are really happy because they bore the expense, 50% of the expense, so they got it back. So all that money went back to the colleges. So they're really happy. But I wanted to share and take the time to share that with you so that it's really transparent where we get that improvement from. And much of that is in the fiscal stability plan. Those salary savings are in the fiscal stability plan and many of those revenue enhancements are in the fiscal stability plan. And with that, I am going to Ricky, if you could bring me all the way back to the beginning. Thank you. I'm sorry. I am going to go back to pen. So again, I thought it was important just to take a moment and show you the the journey of that $10 million difference. If you look on page 16 in our notebook, that equates to this slide. There you go. We'll reinterpret it. Thank you so much. And again, I apologize for the difference in the slide numbers.
Yeah. We can do this. We got this.
I'll pause as we keep up.
I think everybody I'm looking, everybody's on the right page. We're good.
All right. We next have the components. And what I want to point out here is when we do look at our fund balance, that fund balance represents collectively the entire district's fund balance. So right above the total balance, you'll see entity balances of nearly 15 million. Those balances are the colleges' balances. Those are the colleges' ending fund balances and they reside at the colleges. When the colleges have fund balances, they're for the colleges to spend. We assume that they will access those balances. And then when you look a little bit higher, you'll see under the assignments, those assigned balances are assigned for a reason. They are set aside for specific purposes. So even though we have a habit of referring to the entirety of the fund balances being available and as going towards meeting the entirety of our reserve requirement, I do want to point out that they are not always available. All right, let's talk about the state budget. Absolutely.
There we go. I see on this page, whatever it is, 17 or 11 or whatever it is, that there's nothing assigned for board election. I thought that we assigned half of it each year going forward. Have we changed that?
I noticed that too. We will replace that. There should be $250,000 always assigned to board election. And I think that that was a transfer in error, so we will place it back. The reason, we always have it there. We have it budgeted in our district wide budget every other year. Interestingly, it used to be budgeted every year. And that was something that we changed most recently to every other year because we only have an election every other year. We have it assigned in here every year, just in case we need to have an election.
Yeah.
Because.
You never know.
Yeah, so we will place that back in there.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Good eye. So when we looked at the 2526 budget, that budget had quite a journey beginning in January. In January, it was very optimistic budget following on 2425, which had increased revenues largely from personal income taxes for those people who got to have stock options from tech companies that did very well. And the January budget had some assumptions that that would continue. And by time we got to the enacted budget, we saw deficits increasing because revenues were decreasing. At the same time, they had some huge increases in non prop 98 portions of the budget, namely Medi-Cal and other social programs. We also are seeing some more volatility at the federal level that could have economic impacts as well as economic or excuse me, federal funding impacts that could severely impact California funding. And so many of those factors could and have impacted the California budget. So we see with our enacted budget, a $12.6 billion deficit. They're using the same tools and machinations that they've used in the most recent several years. The shifts, the deferrals, all of those same tools to manage the deficit they're using again. What's new is the depth of the pressures, the non prop 98 portion of the budget is pushing on the prop 98. So far, they've been able to protect the TK14 side of the budget in a way. And we'll get a little more into it in a minute. But primarily, we're seeing cuts throughout the non prop 98. Medi-Cal increased tremendously the costs. And so we see huge limits on Medi-Cal, many of which aren't going into place until 2627 and 2728, but huge cuts there. You're seeing, I've called out cuts to affordable housing and other climate and eco programs because those were significant. But there are many, many more cuts throughout the other side of the program. You see on our side, we've got a $49 million withdrawal from the rainy day fund, which is much slower than what had been proposed. We still see a significant balance remaining in there. We've got a couple billion dollars in there, so that's good news. The deferral of SCIF funds has been reduced. I'm going to show you some cash flow data for the first time in my presentation to reassure you, we can manage that. And when I say we're protected, we're protected because our baseline funding is protected. Ongoing COLA and ongoing growth funding is provided. That's our baseline funding. As long as we get ongoing COLA funding and ongoing growth funding, our budget is essentially growing. We're not getting any new ongoing programmatic funding. We're getting new one time funding in our system, but our system's not really getting any other new ongoing programmatic funding. For COLA, I want to point out that while the statewide statutory COLA is 2.3% and the SCIF rates are increasing by 2.3% and five state categorical programs that we receive are increasing by 2.3%. Our district's overall student centered funding formula revenue is not increasing by 2.3%. We had for several years projected that we would be at the funding floor this year, which means we would have gotten zero increase by virtue of some unexpected growth in 2425 and some high funded dual enrollment programs. We have been pushed into what's called the stability protection. If ever you want me to show you the number of rows of calculations, I will, but it's pretty complicated. But we ended up with a 0.23% increase in 2526. It's something. It's better than zero. Better than zero. But that is the increase that has been placed on the salary schedules for all represented employees. That will be appearing on those represented employees' payrolls and their August payrolls, which are issued at the end of August for faculty and at the beginning of September for classified. It will also contain those very small July retro payments. Looking at growth, interestingly, there was great high number of districts advocating statewide to fund unfunded growth. There was a lot of unfunded growth statewide for a lot of districts in the system. And they got it. They got over the two year period, 2.3% growth funded, which will virtually fund all statewide unfunded growth. So great for the system. I want to point out that even though COAST has been growing, we do not have unfunded growth. That's because we've been paid for more enrollment than we have. We've been paid at guarantees. Or we've been paid because of the emergency conditions allowance I mentioned earlier that allowed us to be paid at 201920 enrollment instead of our own actual enrollment, replacing all the way through 202223. So we've been paid for enrollment we didn't have. So even though we've been growing, we've been paid for even more. And here, we're showing all the one time funds that have been granted at the state. These are statewide dollars. But I do want to point out the Common Cloud Data Platform. That's a big win. And Rupa, I know, is very happy to see that on here. I'm very happy because, you know, we're going to be fiscal agent for those funds. And so that's a nice influx for us and we get to help expand this program statewide. Now, we're going to shift into our district's budget and talk about how this enacted budget affects our district along with all the other factors. Any questions on the state budget before I move forward? Fantastic. I will first want to mention that we do provide to you over two pages our budget assumptions. We are expanding every year the information we provide to you on our budget assumptions. We believe that sharing more and more how we build our budget is helpful. So we share with you the unique assumptions we've used every year. The next time we show this, we're going to show you what we use for those multi year assumptions. Because when we don't have the specific assumptions for the budget year, we do use different numbers for those out years. And that will help you understand how we build those out years. So we're going to continue to expand the information we provide there. And here, we're showing you those categorical programs that aren't receiving the COLA. So when a categorical So when a categorical program does not receive a COLA, this year, um, they're not receiving, it's 2.3%, so the ones with the check mark actually do get the full 2.3%. When a program does not get that, they do have to absorb that hit. They're going to experience inflation. The salaries for any positions charged to that program will increase, not just by the salary increase, but by health benefits and everything associated with that salary. So they have to adjust their budgets to be able to absorb that hit without having any increase to their revenue. It's important to note, and the same is true for federal um, programs that do not, and federal programs do not increase by the, any COLA as well. Always worth mentioning. Um, we already talked about the student-centered funding formula and how that's only increasing by 0.23%. Um, we are using two different terms to talk about that increase interchangeably. We're calling it the SCIF COLA, and we're also talking about it as the effective COLA. So you'll see those two terms are meaning the same term, the SCIF COLA and the effective COLA. Um, and here I talk a little bit more about the funding guarantees. As a reminder, there are two. The stability protection, many people thought it went away. It does not go away. It is essentially declining enrollment protection. Even though for regular credit FTES, we're paid on a three-year average, we still have this in place so that if the prior year SCIF calculation plus COLA is greater than our current year, look at the prior year. It gets squarely when we're paid on guarantees and you're going from one guarantee to another, you get something like we got this year, and it's not really a COLA. But there's that guarantee. And then the hold harmless funding floor gives us a, we will never get paid less than. And this year, that guarantee never increases. It will always be 2024, 25 funding. That guarantee is now set in stone, never increases, never changes. But at least we have a guarantee. I want to thank Dr. Serban. She provided us with a great mini-slide. So if you see slides related to enrollment, when you see slides related to class sizes, class um, efficiencies, um, great mini-slides we're out here, we're providing from Dr. Serban and her team, including this one. Um, and I also want to mention that beginning in twenty-two, twenty-three, three, twenty-four, twenty-five, our growth exceeded our projections in each one of those years. So we've been doing a really incredible job by exceeding our enrollment. I also want to mention that in each one of those years, we were paid by a guarantee, and so we did not get paid for that excess growth. By getting paid at a guarantee, our growth did not affect our revenue. But it was the right thing to do that, and you'll see that when I show you how we're going to get paid at our calculation level in twenty-six, twenty-seven. But for twenty-five, twenty-six, we are projecting growth at 2%. And I think we're tracking at just under 2% with our fall enrollment numbers. This slide looks a little confusing. What I want you to walk away from this slide is that we are paid for regular credit FTES at a three-year average. The blue bars represent the grouping in that year of the three years that make up that average. The green bar is that three-year average. And the green line is tracking the trend of our three-year average. Because we were paid at 2019, 20 enrollment levels, you'll see that that blue bar was even for twenty-two, twenty-three, because all three lines is not our actual enrollment, it's nineteen, twenty. Then you see in twenty-three, twenty-four, it starts to get lower because that's when that nineteen, twenty starts dropping off, and it's our actual. And so it looks like our funded enrollment is dropping, because it is. But our actual enrollment is growing because it is. And it's a weird dynamic because we're losing that benefit of being funded above what our actual enrollment is. We're losing that COVID benefit. We're back down to our actual enrollment, and it gives us this unique dynamic. That is actually why we got to not be at 0% this year. But you can see in twenty-six, twenty-seven, that green arrow starts to go up. That green arrow results in twenty-six, twenty-seven, we're going to get funded at the calculated revenue. This chart gives you a lot of numbers. If you focus in the middle where you see the green highlights, that's showing us whether we're getting funded at a guarantee. So the center ones, you see an A, B, or C. A is our calculated revenue. B is stability protection. C is a hold harmless. Twenty-four, twenty-five, we're at the hold harmless. Twenty-five, twenty-six, stability. Twenty-six, twenty-seven, calculated. Twenty-seven, twenty-eight, calculated. That's really good news. When you look at it on a chart, when you look at twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, the orange line are guarantees. And those blue bars for those out years, all above that orange line. That means we're going to get paid for our growth. We're going to get paid for all that hard work that we've done. If we had not grown in those earlier years, we would not have been able to exit the hold harmless. We would not have been able to reach this point and start generating revenue above the hold harmless. So that's when we start getting the reward for all the hard work we did, is starting in twenty-six, twenty-seven. So the hard work we did in focusing on generating enrollment, focusing on the dual enrollment, getting the higher um, revenueed credit, doing all of that work pays off beginning in twenty-six, twenty-seven, and starts generating revenue. That's the magic year when we start doing it. It hasn't come all at once, and actually in twenty-six, twenty-seven, our revenue difference isn't quite the COLA again. I want to go back to that slide. Oops, going the wrong way. Wrong button. If you can see at the top of this chart in twenty-six, twenty-seven, the COLA is projected, it is a projection to be 3.02%. And our projections show at the very bottom, the actual increase is 2.3%. That happens because we're going from a guarantee to a calculated amount. When you move between guarantees, it gets this weird dynamic. But it's good news because that's when we start to generate that revenue. And it becomes consistent afterwards. And that consistency is fantastic. That's the reliability, and that's when that focus on our enrollment strategy starts to matter, that's when all that hard work pays off. Before I go on, and as I get back to the right slide, are there any questions on the enrollment growth? Great. Um, my next slide talks about the health benefit impact. Um, I do want to point out that this is the result of a lot of hard work district-wide of my colleague, Vice Chancellor Fierro and her team, and the collaboration with the Health Benefits Advisory Committee, just a tremendous, a lot of hard work to achieve just this 8% increase. And it's not often, I would say, just an 8% increase that costs us a total of $3.6 million. That was hard won. Um, it avoided several million dollars more of increases. Um, of that increase, if I can share, 90% is borne by the dist-, 97% is borne by the district. About 3% is borne by employees. So it was hard won. Um, employee contributions do not change regardless of the cost of the premiums. I mentioned earlier, when I talked about the change in our twenty-four, twenty-five any fund balance, that part of the change was a $3 million transfer from the unrestricted general fund to the Health and Welfare Self-Insurance Fund. The reason is because there was a steep increase in the claims submitted to the Health and Welfare Self-Insurance Fund from our claims administrator in 2024, 25, as well as in the prior year, 2023, 24. Part of that increase was because we have an outgoing claims administrator. We have a new incoming claims administrator. The outgoing claims administrator submitted several claims that were for several years that were very, very large claims. Very large claims. We believe that the claims administrator was catching up on some claims and needed to submit them. But that's not the only reason. When we looked back at twenty-three, twenty-four, we're um, twenty-three, twenty-four, and um, my team will appreciate this. I told them earlier that every time I look at a presentation, I always see one error that I couldn't find despite the millions of people who proofread this, and I see it on this slide. It's in the second line where it says twenty-three, twenty-three. There's always one. Um, in twenty-three, twenty-four, the projected increase, which is projected to us by an underwriter, um, because it is a self-insurance fund, was projected to be 5.8%. And that's how we assess the premiums that we transfer ourselves into that self-insurance fund. The claims actually were almost twice that much at 9.4%. So that means that somehow we're not being accurate. We're not charging ourselves enough. But if you see in twenty-four, twenty-five, where they were estimated to be 5.3%, they were almost 30%. So what happens is that means that the fund is not sufficient, and it becomes negative because we're paying too many claims out of it. And it required us to have a transfer into the fund. And so we needed to make a total of $6 million into that fund, three of which came from the unrestricted fund. The other three is coming from the Greater Self-Insurance Fund to make sure that the Health and Ware Fel-, Health and Ware Fel-, Health and Welfare Fund is um, fully solvent. Um, moving forward, we are going to follow the advice and increase the reserve on that fund. Um, in collaboration with benefits and human resources, we are, and also with the contributions from our alliance partners, we're going to do a greater analysis and ensure that we are correctly identifying the costs in the PPU so that we can best identify solutions with the PPU. But I did want to identify that as a concern moving forward. And I also want to share with you in this very colorful chart that as we identify total increases in salaries and benefits, it is important to identify total increases in salaries and benefits. The brown trend line is tracking increases in our unrestricted revenue. This includes Student Center Funding Formula as well as the revenue we receive for adding full-time faculty. As you know, we've received and participated in adding full-time faculty. So this includes that revenue as well. Um, for the most recent year and the adopted projection, that total increase is about 0.22% over all, over the prior year. Um, when we include that other faculty increase number, it's a little bit off of the 0.23. Um, and then if you track, we pulled out some of the percentages so that you can see the big numbers. Um, if you want the calculations of the small components, we can show that. Didn't show up because it makes it a little busy. But the top trend line, the orange line, is the total salaries and benefits increase. And so you can see in the same year in twenty-five, twenty-six, the total benefits, salaries and benefits increase in that same year is 3.04%. So the total salaries and benefits increase is much greater than our actual revenue increase. The big um, drivers there obviously is health and welfare. The health and welfare 8% is huge. Um, the actual increase this year from um, the increase on salary schedule is only 0.19%. That's because that's from um, management salaries were not increased, so that's why it's lower than the 0.23. If it had been applied to all salary schedules, it would have been 0.23, but because management were not increased, because we are doing an allocation model or total compensation model for management, we did not provide management with the salary increases here. But it is an illustration that consistently the total salary and benefits increase is much greater than our unrestricted revenue increase. You will find in your appendices, the dollar amount increase. Um, that will be one of your corrected slides in an earlier conversation um, with Dr. Parker. We discovered an error, so we do have a corrected slide for that. So all of that collectively, all of that information is used to inform our calculation of our current year budget as well as our out-year projections. This does include the impact of the colleges and the district offices fiscal stability plan. The colleges will be presenting their fiscal stability plan in just a few moments, as will I. So you'll be able to hear the detail of what went in there, but this is reflective of all of those fiscal stability plans. If you compared this to prior to the tentative budget projection, you'll see that the deficit spending has been greatly reduced. Part of that is due to the fiscal stability plan and the new actions identified. Part of that is due to some identified changes we made into the reduction of some IT costs. Um, those IT costs, and again, I'm going in the wrong directions, were from the banner implementation that currently we're paying for two banner systems during that implementation. And then beginning in twenty-six, twenty-seven, when we complete implementation of Banner SaaS, we'll begin to eliminate the former banner program. And over the course of three years, we will eliminate $3 million of costs. And so you see the reduction of that gradually. The biggest cost will come out in eight, nine. But overall, you see the impact of the fiscal stability plan. But you do see deficit spending, and it's because of the reasons I just showed you. So you see our reserves dropping from 26.7%, which represents about three and a third months of salary, down to 20% in eight, nine. And you see it being a fairly consistent decline. Um, if we brought this out all the way to 2030, 31, that's when we would fall below reserve requirements without change. One of the reasons we look at multi-year projections is so that we can identify the problem, so that we can solve it. And we all work collectively to solve this problem. We identify the problem and we work to solve it every time, and that's why we have solved it in years past. We are now sharing our cash flow. Um, what's interesting with our cash flow is that most of our cash comes from property taxes. The remaining part of our revenue, our cash, comes from general fund. So our SCIF is paid from two buckets. If you take our total SCIF allocation, it is first paid from property taxes, and the remaining part is paid from state general sources. Some districts have smaller property taxes, so they get more from the state. We have larger. The state flow is much more regular. Property taxes much more irregular, so you see irregular cash here. What's good for us is when they do the state deferrals, those happen from May and June to July and August. Those are our high points. We manage that very easily. So we have no concerns. And even our low points, we have sufficient cash. But as our reserves drop, so do our cash. There are not a one-to-one correlation. They're not a one-to-one correlation, but they have a relationship. And so as our reserves drop, we pay much more attention to cash. But we will present, be presenting this information to you with every budget presentation, and we do now have a pre-programmed cash flow so that we can simply drop in the numbers and make it very easy for us to track. Next, I want to share with you an alternate scenario that does not consider the worst case, but that does show you what a worsened case scenario would look like, not using made-up worst cases, but some realistic things that could occur if things went a little bit south. I want to first share with you the Anderson Economic Forecast, the most recent second quarter update from June. Some of you may be familiar with this. If you're not, it's a pretty reliable forecast that was surprisingly more conservative than most other forecasts. It is a forecast. So I went to put that out there. It is a forecast, which means it is the opinion of these economists that make up the Anderson School at UCLA. Their overall concerns were relative to the effective tariff rate of 15% and the geopolitical tensions they actually cited. End of this release, the specific ones they're most concerned about, they're citing growth in the GDP, California's unemployment rate, how it relates to the state's unemployment rate, sectors that they believe are contracting in California, and inflation rates that are growing. When I looked at these, I identified some changes and some assumptions that we could make in a worsened case. I want to first acknowledge that these assumptions are all tracked in different areas of the district. There are already things that we have identified as things that are on our radar. We regularly track them. We know how we would react to them. If these things did occur, we would know about them well in advance. We know how we would react to them to mitigate them. So when I show you this next slide, it assumes we would have taken no action to mitigate them. We would not take an early action to respond to them. So I want to acknowledge that, that in real life, we would have taken action to mitigate them as soon as we knew about them and saw things changing. So I want to acknowledge that. But my first assumption is that 25, 26 isn't 2% growth, it is 1% growth. My second one is that inflation in 26, 27 increases beyond our projections to 1% more in nonlabor costs. My third is that healthcare increases in 26, 27 grows from our 4% assumption to 9%, which some industry projections currently show. And our fourth, and that we didn't take action to avoid that. And our fourth assumption is that in 26, 27, the shortfall the state experienced in 24, 25, that they backfilled in the 25, 26 budget, occurs again, but that the state doesn't have the resources to backfill it. And so if all of those things occurred and we took no action to mitigate them, we would have a $12.6 million deficit in 26, 27 that would exhaust our reserves by 28, 29 below the required level. But again, oops, and I keep skipping too far. But again, we would have taken action to mitigate because these are factors we are But there is value in identifying what could happen, because that is why we identify them, so that we can track them, and we know what could happen, so we know how to mitigate them. It is why we regularly track enrollment. It is why we talk about increasing healthcare costs and things we can do to avoid them. It is why we talk about, we regularly budget half a percent of a deficit, and we have an actual reserve for future deficits. It is why we do those things, so that we can help mitigate these. And here we have a discussion about how there had been a 7% deficit in 24, 25, and how the budget did contain $210 million to backfill that deficit. And with that, I want to get to the good part, the celebratory part, because our colleges have done a lot of work. And I want to get to the part where I don't talk anymore, and we hear somebody else's voice. Except that I think I get to talk some more, because I get to talk about the district-wide actions. I spoke too soon. We do have those district-wide actions. I think we're all familiar with the hiring freeze across the board, how full-time hiring are limited to specific program requirements, licensing accreditation needs, because the district is well above the font. You do have a chart in your appendices. We're going to go into more specificity about creating efficiencies and streamlining process improvement across the board, instructional productivity, looking at redundancies in informational technology, revenue enhancement. We already talked about prior year fiscal stability plans. Colleges will go into some detail about that. We're really proud about what we've done at the district office and with district-wide services. We have done a lot of reorganizations. In my area, we did eliminate the Director of Risk Services. We collapsed that as a separate division and reassigned those departments in my remaining two areas. We also eliminated reassigned positions to the district and continue to do so. You'll see another reorganization in current phases, but these are all prior years. In IT alone, just with removing 250 servers that have been decommissioned, they save $50,000 annually. That's an ongoing effort. We've realigned the budget. Trustee Hornbuckley, you mentioned the elections. We've reduced our budget by $250 every other year because we had this in the budget that was unnecessary. We continue business process streamlining. Travel and contract processes have reduced time and effort with workflow. Slate International Student Applications in January 24, that was automated, so saving hundreds of hours with that effort. And then looking forward in district office and district-wide, you'll see some of these district-wide things repeated, because at the colleges, that's where you're seeing a lot of the savings. But in reorganizations, HR will be saving $77,000 in their reorg. Our new district director is being funded from one-time non-general fund sources, so removing that from our ongoing unrestricted. I talked about information technology, how they're saving things there. They're still having ongoing redundancy studies. I think you all know about the study we're doing on our vacant lot to see what we can generate in revenue there, that that's a great opportunity to generate some unrestricted resources. We have over in Course Leaf Curriculum under Dr. Serbonne in Fall '25, again, doing some automation, saving hundreds of hours in banner. In our contracts administration system this fall, streamlining that, not just reducing the effort it takes to get a contract processed, but also the effort it takes to retrieve contracts, to get notification, it's time to renew a contract. That's going to be enormous, saving legal expenses, because we no longer have to have the consulting on them, because we're using pre-approved language, having AI tools for non-standard contracts, looking forward to that. We had a study performed last year, we're implementing this year district-wide, just looking for utility billing errors, saving $30,000 annually. That's net, just on utility billing errors. I don't have it mentioned here, but we're doing a larger study about how we can save energy through things like behavior, as well as looking on, do we add batteries? Do we do LED? What gives us the greatest payback? Parking fees, you're going to hear from the colleges on what the impact was on increasing event parking to unlimited, and EV charging, just instead of just having this hourly rate that had no connection to our actual cost, to recovering our actual cost. And so for the district office, we have two budgets. You're not going to see huge dollar amounts, but this is huge for us, that you see $77,000 recovered in 25, 26. But you also are going to see some savings in district-wide, and this is where you see the savings in 26, 27, 27, 28, and 28, 29, for the reductions when we start to eliminate that second banner, once we fully implemented banner SaaS, and that's significant. And then here is how we spend our money in that. And so with that, I am going to now get to stop talking and let Dr. Pagel with Orange Coast take over the remote. Thank you so much.
It's good to be with you. Rich Pagel, Vice President, Administrative Services, Orange Coast College. And before I get started, just want to recognize a couple people that really made this possible. And Dr. Suarez, under her leadership, she's been here five years now, and I think from day one on through today, we've been talking about budgets and difficult times. And so under her leadership, all of this has come about. Marlene Drinkwine and her team, thank you for putting this together. And then a special thank you to Rachel Kubick, who is our Fiscal Services Director, and we work very closely with our college budget committee. All of these slides are shared with our college budget committee, and we spend a lot of time going through this in the past. President Gordon has been part of that budget committee, and we've done a pretty good job, I think, on that. So this is our fiscal stability plan, and this goes back from '23 to '25. Again, there is, we had a SERP, Retirement Program, back in 2019, 2020, really focused on a few areas here, and that's increased revenues, and that's through our entrepreneur activities. That's really every dollar that we can increase in our entrepreneur activities is a dollar we don't need to cut. We're also looking at reducing expenditures, looking at maximizing those one-time expenditures. We did receive a significant amount of COVID money when COVID was going on, and we brought that into the campus. We used it for cameras, locking door systems, automation that really allowed our classified staff and our management to better, more efficiently work on campus. Of course, looking at our student services, they have categorical programs and categorical funds, and we were able to increase the use of those categorical funds of $1.2 million. And then again, ancillary revenues, we do have our swap meet, which is very beneficial for us, and that allows us to bring in annual resource requests. That's a special term that we use at Orange Coast College. Every department can put together annual resource requests, request for funding, to look at those expenditures. On this one, going back to increased revenues again, we have outstanding facilities. Measure M and Measure C has allowed us to just build world-class facilities. We have lots of renters that want to come in and use those facilities, and we've seen an increase in those facility rentals. And then also, moving in with our new parking systems, allowed us to start to become charging for parking, which we hadn't done for a lot. You're going to see event parking there, revenue, and that primarily is from the OC Fairgrounds. You know, many, many patrons from the OC Fair Park at Orange Coast College, for decades we didn't charge for parking, and we started charging for parking last year. And this year, we also charged for parking and made significant revenues, and I'll cover that soon. One of the biggest areas, of course, is our human resources. Our budget, about 91% of our budget is human resources and benefits. With that SERP or with that retirement, sorry, the separation program that was done back in 2019, that allowed for us to do an enormous amount of reorganizations. We closed positions. Here, we see 31 positions closed from '23, '24, $4.1 million, significant. And then I think Vice Chancellor Drinkwine also mentioned the time that it takes to hire is timely, and we do recognize that time as a salary savings, because that hiring attrition is there. We've also completed 48 reorganizations campus-wide. That is huge. That takes an enormous amount of effort from our human resources to our management team, looking at how we become more efficient, looking at how we can provide the same services differently or better, and that resulted in $1.8 million. Now, '25, '26, and things that we're still looking at, seeing, is our facility rentals. Again, we have the Olympics coming in in '28, and we do have a lot of interest from national teams utilizing our facilities, so we are meeting and trying to bring in those Olympic teams to our campus. Our parking revenues, again, I mentioned the increase to $10 per day. That doesn't impact our students, or students are still at $5 a day if they choose. So it only impacts the facility guests coming in, fairgrounds patrons. It also impacts our swap meet customers. Not that it impacts our swap meet customers, but our swap meet purchases parking from the campus to allow our customers to park free at Orange Coast College. So our swap meet now is renting from the campus a large portion of parking on Saturdays and Sundays. We see that non-resident tuition is increased by 4%. We are seeing just a small increase in non-resident students, and we'll, you know, I think with some of the issues that are going on federally, it does impact some of our international students, but we're closely watching that. Looking at reducing expenditures, maximizing those one-time funds, we still have some COVID funds, just a little bit of those COVID funds, using restricted funds, like I mentioned before, from student services, and then looking to our swap meet to help with our annual resource requests as they come due. We still have additional positions that we're closing on the campus. Again, that salary savings. Charge back for utilities and housing, that's important. Our housing is doing very well, and we're seeing revenues come in from housing. One of the things with our housing is that the college provides the utilities for the housing, and that was the way that we could get affordable rates for our students and really bring down the cost of the housing. Now, housing is paying back the campus for those utilities, so we recognize about $1.6 million coming back into the campus from housing, just for utilities. Reorganizations in progress, those keep moving along. We do have certain groups that are self-supporting that are on our watch list, and you see those there. If you would have looked at this two years ago, you would have seen public safety also, because the parking fees for the campus go to support our public safety. Now, if we look at this future fiscal stability plan as we move forward, we see an ending balance, that first column there, '24, '25, of $2.3 million. That rolls into the '25, '26. We'll use that ending balance dollars to support our deficit spending, which we do have a slight amount. But you'll see that we'll have an ending balance projected for the '25, '26. As we go forward into the '26, '27 year, that deficit spending again is there, is also indicated in Vice Chancellor Drinkwine's charts, but again, those ending balances are ending at $1.1 million. And then as we go out into the '27, '28 year, we're looking at an ending balance of 2.3. So this is all good news for us. This is all good signals, and we're watching it closely, though, for those changes that Marlene mentioned. Looking at our dedicated revenue, so this is where we start to see our international students, our non-resident students, at $2.6 million, largest being our international students coming in at $7 million, and the rentals and leases, those facilities, coming at $800,000. And then there was a pers and stirs reconciliation where we saw about $850,000 there. I mentioned 91.6% of our budget is in salaries and benefits, and there you see, which leaves about, you know, 9%, a little less than 9% for operating costs. So a very tight budget, $115 million budget, and majority of it is salaries and benefits. I'll take any questions you have now, but that's my presentation, and we'll be turning it over to Golden West next. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Dr. Pagel.
Yep.
Who's going to be taking over the management of the harbor, and when will that begin?
Yeah, we're in the process. We did a process working We did an, we did a process working with NCCD, which is the owner of the harbor. We, at the five-year mark, Scion, who had been the property manager for those five years, it gave us an opportunity maybe to look at other property managers. And so Capstone Properties will be taking over that in about 15 days. And again, NCCD is the owner. They keep the contract with Capstone Partners. As far as our role, we're part of the assessment team. We give strong recommendation on who the partner should be. We work very closely with the partner, but it's the owner of the harbor, NCCD, that makes the decision about transferring to a new property manager and those types of things.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay.
There's no further questions. We'll go on to Mr. Hicks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Rich.
Thank you, Dr. Pagel. Good evening, Honorable Board. Rick Hicks from Golden West College, pleasure to be with you tonight. And at the risk of copyright infringement of the Vice Chancellor and Dr. Pagel, I also need to make some thank yous tonight. We would be remiss at Golden West College if we didn't acknowledge that since March, we've been without a business director. And sadly, in July, we lost one of our business partner, business office partners. He passed away. And so that team has rallied together to really pull a rabbit out of their hat here, but it's been with the assistance of Vice Chancellor's team, Roselly Alvarez, Steve Kim, I nearly been getting recognized all night. Same thing with Rachel Kubick. Thank you, President Suarez and Rich, they've been helping out. And then the same thing over at Coastline. Vince Rodriguez's team has stood up. Christine's right hand, Derek, has also been helping us. So with that team effort, we'd like to present to you what we have for our budget. You'll hear some redundancies in terms of activities, but when we look back on our Phase 1 through 3, it actually gives us an opportunity to be a bit, to do a bit of a postmortem. I hate to use that expression, other than the fact that there are things that you need to cut and remove, and there are things that have worked well for us. So this is to highlight a few of the things that has worked well for us. We likewise have been using one-time funding sources to full advantage. In fact, a fun story about that HERF element is that when President Randall took over, there was a transition period where it was missed, that we needed to request that money be retained for the next fiscal year, and she directed that we not lose it, and we did not. We reached out to the federal government, and they were great to give us an extension. But that money, $1 million worth, went to the nursing project, and we were able to create a new nursing simulation lab on the second floor there. Many of you have seen it. I see your heads nodding, and that has enabled us to not only have onsite training for our prospective nurses, it helps them not have to travel to different hospitals and go out and do their clinicals out of our campus. They can now do it onsite. So it's been a phenomenal addition to our, our campus. With the assistance of our shared governance committees, we were able to meet with all of them. We had wonderful cooperation and recommendations that resulted in a number of these, including our salary savings from vacancies, which over the course of those three years was $1.2 million. Similarly, as we go forward, you'll see in a moment that we are having dialogue with them and likewise getting great support and recommendation for how we can use positions wisely, fill what we need, but where we don't have to make some eliminations or freeze those positions. As we look at how we've increased our revenues, we've done a couple of fun things. One is the president and under the guidance of Claudia Lee have invested in international students. In fact, this next year, we're glad to have 55 new international students. In fact, they've started now with the fall semester. But that investment has allowed us to see about a 13% increase year over year going into '25, '24, I'm sorry, '25, '26. We also had some wonderful space rental opportunities that we took advantage of. One of them was with Long Beach Police Department, to use Rich's expression, world-class. We have a world-class criminal justice center, and that training facility has been used by Long Beach PD for the last two years to house some of their academies while they were renovating their existing ones. And I'll talk in a moment about some other opportunities we have with law enforcement, but we've made some very specific investments in CTE areas so that not only do we see growth in revenues, but we are educating young men and women who can go out and immediately earn a living. As we look at those actions that we have planned for the next year or so, similarly with the expanded rent and leases, we're being very conservative with our projections. We don't want to overpromise and then not be able to deliver, but we are investigating a partnership with another law enforcement agency who might be able to come in and share our facilities. And I say that with the understanding that we are not abdicating our opportunity to train our own students. We have sufficient facility space to do both of those things, and we're looking at a very large local law enforcement department who's looking at a multi-year agreement with us. We hope that will come to fruition. One of our more interesting entrepreneurial efforts is the Regional Testing Center. For some years, we have been, under a grant, hosting throughout the state or providing throughout the state testing for future nurses. That grant ended about a year ago, and we've absorbed those opportunities to find a way to turn it into revenue. And so we are now partnering with a subject matter expert in this area, and we are working on arranging and organizing the testing. And right now, our projection is about a half million dollars, and we hope that it might even grow beyond that. There are some challenges there, as you can imagine, whenever you get into a business and investment kind of an opportunity, we're keeping our eye on that very, very closely. To the point about the international students, I did address that a little bit already, but this year, we're expecting about $140,000 increase. And then similarly with our parking permits and so forth that Dr. Pagel talked about, we hope to see an increase there as well. We are also identifying some specific positions to freeze, and we've eliminated two positions going into this next year. The three positions we're going to freeze were with the agreement of our shared governance groups, and they're one manager, one classified, one certificated. We actually did that this last year, and it resulted in some, some very significant savings for us. As we look at the horizon, however, we also have to be mindful that COLA did not apply to all the categoricals. And so as we look out two or three years, we are modeling to try to make sure that we don't have those, those offline investments come back to bite us a little bit, but we need to bring them back to the general fund. So we're being very mindful of that, and we're planning for the future. But these steps have earned or saved us the equivalent of about $2 million. If you look at our '25, '26 adopted budget, we expect to be at about $670,000 to the good, and that is based on those terrific investments that we just talked about. Looking down the road, we're also looking at a deficit spending, but this buys us time, and you've seen that the campuses and the district have been able to find ways to mitigate those future deficits. We have every confidence we'll be able to do that in '26, '27, and into the future. This chart shows how we are generating some local revenues that we've spent time on. And then similarly, we are over 91% in our personnel costs as well. And so that low-hanging fruit is becoming harder and harder to pluck, but we keep our eye on the horizon for opportunities, and we will seize them as we go forward. That is Golden West's presentation. May I ask you any questions?
That's great.
Yes.
The, you mentioned the nurses, I want to call it robotics, but the simulator.
Yes.
I'm sure in the future, that's going to attract not only more attention, but also more institutions that would want to see if they could use that facility.
Absolutely, Trustee Moran. In fact, we're already seeing an increase in nursing student. Our enrollment there has increased significantly, and we're planning for how we're going to be able to, in the future, accommodate larger and larger classes. And as a part of the 2045 vision, if you will, we're looking at a whole new allied health center that would be able to accommodate the great work that we've been doing and what we want to do into the future. So you're exactly right.
I just read about a school in, I think it was in Florida, that's going to be aligning itself with a medical school. So they'll have classes at the community college that will eventually give credit towards degrees in medicine. So there's more for you to do.
Okay. We look forward to it. With that, I'll turn it over to Christine Nguyen from Coast, Orange, from Coastline, rather. Thank you.
Sorry.
He doesn't know where you're from.
He doesn't.
Good evening, trustees. Christine Nguyen from Coastline College, at least as of today. I also want to follow my colleagues' acknowledgement and also extend the sincere appreciation to the college leadership across all of the constituents, because we also share all of these presentations and present them at our budget committee as well as our planning committee to receive their support and the endorsement of the proposal. Also want to thank the district leadership also for providing information for us to compile in this presentation. With that, as you can see from Phase 1 through Phase 3 recap, following the same format as presented by my colleagues, starting with the increasing revenue for the past three fiscal stability plan, we show that we have been able to generate $887,000 more in non-resident tuition, also for facility rental income. We also want to brag that we believe we also have world-class facility. Even our parking lot, we can lease it for about $1 million for the next 10 years. So these are all what we've captured for the first three phases, so we're not going to go into the detail. As far as reducing expenditure, you can see that Coastline also utilized the strategy of offsetting all of the expenditure against the one-time funds where applicable, and they are listed for your information, the total dollars that we have been able to offset against these grants. As far as cost savings, we were also able to capture through reorganization, an ongoing of closed position totaling $577,000, and one-time vacant position, $1.1 million. Moving into the current Phase 4 of the Stability Plan, also starting with increasing in revenue, non-resident tuition, while very modest, but it is still generating additional revenue for the college. For facility rental income, I'm very happy to report that at the next board meeting, I will be presenting two lease agreement that will total over $320,000 of rental income. As you can see from my note above, because we enter into the agreement almost halfway into the year, only $150,000 of rental income will be realized in fiscal year '25, '26, but in '26, '27, it will be the full $320,000 for the next five years, with an option to renew for another five years. So definitely stability in rental income projection for the next 10 years. Reducing expenditure, oh, and one more. So those are the two finished lease negotiations. I'm working on an additional two lease negotiation, so hopefully I'll get to sunshine and showcase that in my '26, '27 facility rental income. Reducing expenditure, again, what we are showing here are what we have left in the grant or identify as the grant dollars available to shift the general fund expense to. State COVID block grant, the final round, we have a million dollars left, and you will see how we plan to spend that down in the next slide. And the rest of the grant, you can see $339,000 for a scheduled maintenance project, as well as we have really been able to capitalize on the distribution of the Measure M endowment for both facility and for technology. As you can see, we've capture or plan to capture in '25, '26, almost $800,000 in facility and $2.1 million in technology, expenditure that we'll be able to utilize the endowment for. Outside of that, we still have about $2.6 million in endowment fund for facility to be used by 2036, and about 5.2 in technology to be used by 2036. Of course, that was the intent of the endowment, is to give us the 20 years utilization. Cost savings in '25, '26, we have identified closed position totaling $126,000 and one-time vacant position of $63,000. So on this slide, I want to start off with the great news. As we close out for '24, '25, I'm happy to report that the college will close with a surplus of, or yes, a surplus of $2.4 million. If we add that to the beginning balance of 6.2, the college is now having $8.69 million in fund balance. As we move across to '25, '26 and the outward years, we've built the adopted budget for '25, '26 with the deficit of $286,000. This is before we identify or applying any one-time solutions to that. So if we didn't have any solution, the college intent would be to tap into the fund balance to mitigate the deficit. So you can see that if we had a $286,000 deficit structure, it would bring our fund balance down from 8.6 to 8.4. I'll explain the bottom table after I finish going across to the outward years. Using the information provided by Vice Chancellor Drinkwine, for all of the revenue portion and the district assessment for the outward years of '26, '27, absence of any other solution, we are projecting a deficit of $929,000. Again, absence of any solution, fund balance would be the primary source to tap into, which would bring our fund balance down to 7.4 million. Same analogy going across. You can see that also projected a deficit of almost a million and tapped into fund balance to bring it down to 6.4 million. Now, I'm going to go over the bottom table. These are potential savings and improvement from other not-yet-implemented action. Vice Chancellor Drinkwine introduced this table so to give us an opportunity to add any solution that comes about after the budget is adopted. So for that, in fiscal year '25, '26, you can see that $250,000 has been earmarked for software licensing from COVID block grant. The same strategy has also been used for the following year in '26, '27. We also got tapped into COVID block grant for software licensing, which we know is a known and ongoing cost. With that, the second line that you see below that, $715,000, that is actually the deficit factor that has also been released from the district to the college. So thank you, the district leadership, for allowing us to recapture some of that. So move, and the other thing is the STIRS refund. That was the other thing Vice Chancellor Drinkwine talked about, the STIRS refund. So those, while those are one-time, that's why we are putting them under this table, because they are not ongoing solution, but they are one-time solution that will mitigate the deficit. So as you can see, once those one-time solutions are applied, if you look at the adopted budget for Coastline, we no longer have a deficit. We actually have $678,000 to the good, which means that we are projecting that that will go toward a fund balance at the end of this fiscal year. Using the same analogy and going across, now, of course, we have not completely filled out all of the solutions because they are still in the making, and they are still to be realized in the outward years. What we do know, facility rental income, I hope to sunshine that under '26, '27 years line, once all of the four lease agreement are finalized. But as you can see, for now, while the college still recognize a potential deficit, but with a one-time solution, including using fund balance, you can see that the college, by the end of '27, '28, absence of any other one-time solution that we have not introduced, we still have the fund balance to cover for that, and we'll close '27, '28 with a projected fund balance of 8.2 million. Following my colleague, this pie chart is for the local revenue generated for Coastline. So you can see all of the different funding source and the percentage of that. And this is the expenditure pie chart. Again, 91% of our budget, no surprise, is earmarked for salary and benefit. I did want to add the footnote that the college fund balance of 8.3 million that I reported earlier as of the closing of 2025. as of the closing of twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year represented a twenty-two percent reserve for the college. That would be the end of my presentation and I would take any questions.
I apologize. Some of us were looking distracted. There's a gentleman that is wandering around. We want to make sure that campus safety figures it out. And I think that the other side kind of in between Adam, so that's what, he kept wandering this way. And so I apologize if we seem like, because I was texting Ricky. So it wasn't that we weren't paying attention. We just want to make sure we're all safe.
No worries.
Thank you. Anybody have questions for?
Okay. Thank you, trustee.
It pertains to Coastline only. It goes back years and it's something we haven't talked about for a long time. Do you remember there was, there was an issue about students from other states taking online classes here and our students taking online classes elsewhere? And I think it was an insurance issue. Does this sound familiar to you?
What I could think of based on that was more of our military program where we have military students taking classes at the different state and that we have to register with the state to have those student register and we actually have to pay a fee.
Right. Maybe that's what it was. Yeah.
Yes.
It was a big deal with, through the state chancellor's office. And they were having a problem with how we were doing this and the, and the home states had some kind of requirement and they were giving waivers to, to different educational institutions.
Yes, as a matter of fact, the acronym comes to mind, SARAH. But I can't say what it stands for. Yes, that was the agreement and indeed the college has worked through that to ensure where there will be student register, that an agreement is in place.
So has that, that's been adjusted since?
So that is, that's actually an ongoing agreement.
Still, okay.
Yes, yes. Because we actually have to pay a fee for them. So that's how the state, I don't want to use the word capitalize on it, but for them to be enrolled in those state, there's a fee that we must pay and register with the state.
Okay. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Any other question? All right. So we'll go back to our vice chancellor, it looks like.
Thank you so much. And we are nearly through, so. One of the last things we need to do is statutorily required. The Education Protection Act requires that we disclose every year what these funds were used for. Normally I skip right past this. However, we do have a new trustee. And so I want to take a moment to explain what the EPA Education Protection Act is. It was the result of Proposition 30. And if we can go in our way back time travel machine under Governor Arnold Schwarzenegger, the state of California was in a budget crisis. And Prop 30 was advertised marketed as a way to bring state dollars to schools. What actually it did was bring state dollars to the state and replaced state dollars to schools, dollar to dollar. So schools didn't get any new dollars. And it was the way that the state actually avoided cutting schools. So the state had a budget shortfall and it didn't have the dollars, they said, to fully fund schools. So Prop 30 raised taxes of different sorts. And so every dollar that it raised went to this, us, to schools. But every dollar that schools received from the EPA offset a dollar of state general funding. You heard me earlier say that the SCIF apportionment and other assorted funding is like a bucket. You have a bucket with your total allocation and it's more than the SCIF. There's a couple of other funds and other programs in there, but it's a bucket. And you fill it first up with property taxes and you actually add enrollment fees. And now you add EPA and whatever's left, the state pays. So every dollar we get from the EPA, it offsets state general funding by an equal dollar. But it also added additional reporting requirements to every district. And so we have to say, how do we use it? And it's slightly restricted, interestingly. So every year we complete this form and it has some restrictions and we have to tell the state how we're using their money that the voters were told provides additional money for schools. So I gave you a little, excuse me, a little lesson along with a little soapbox. But that is Prop 30 and EPA. And so when you do take your action next week at your regularly scheduled meeting, one of those actions will, you'll be asked to adopt the EPA and take action on the EPA. Actually, one of the reasons often our SCIF has a revenue deficit is because the Department of Finance has done a poor job in projecting EPA revenues, which have been coming in much lower than normal. And so when there's a shortfall there, there's a shortfall in overall SCIF funding. And so some of the backfills to backfill the shortfall in EPA funding. Interesting enough.
Vice Chancellor.
Trustee Moreno, yeah.
That amount that you showed on the slide, that's Coast Colleges.
That is our share of EPA funding. We get thirty-one point six million dollars in this, in the twenty-five, twenty-six year, that is our projection for EPA revenues.
What's, what's the total state in that category?
I'll have to get back to you. I can tell you what we, I can give you both what we actually received in twenty-four, twenty-five and then what the projection is for twenty-five, twenty-six.
In total state?
Yes, I can tell you what that projection is because they include a projection annually in the budget. And then there's the actual, and there have been in the most recent years, a large variance between the two. There's also a timing issue.
I saw you had a section, a line item on the Veterans Resource Program for this, for us. And I didn't get a sense of additions or subtractions. What, what, what did you see with that particular line item for the three schools?
If that was on, was that on the new slide? Was that deeper into the budget book itself, trustee?
It was on your presentation. It just had, had a line item and I just.
Okay, then that would have been a one-time funding, so that would have been an expansion. If it was on the earlier slide with the state budget, that would have been an expanded funding.
Thank you.
I think it's page twenty-three is what you meant because there's a, is that what career common? No, that's financial aid.
No, it was, it was a separate, it was a separate line, but I, it just, you know, just going back, thinking about it and what it means overall for the, for the district at our three colleges. We'll talk about it.
Yes, yes, we can talk about it, definitely.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Okay, so just some concluding remarks that really we have a volatile economic environment that we are tracking. And our state is continuing to experience declining revenues and increasing expenditures despite their attempts to control those costly social programs. Despite that, the district has been incredibly successful in growing enrollment and launching incredibly successful innovative programs. The Fiscal Stability Plan has proven successful in staving off deficit spending in the short term. And the district-wide collaboration, particularly when we look at healthcare costs, but much more largely in the entirety of the Fiscal Stability Plan and the actions involved there has been incredibly successful. And that continued collaboration is going to be critical in moving forward and finding those longer-term solutions that are going to be necessary to align those ongoing expenditures to ongoing revenues. As you've heard, that low-hanging fruit is the perfect analogy, has been plucked. It's becoming more and more difficult to find those easy to identify and less easy to identify solutions such as reorganizations, such as those vacancies that we've been able to eliminate and we continue to do so. We'll always continue to find those solutions. But it really will take greater effort to find those longer-term solutions. As you know, next week we'll be coming back with the recommended adoption of this budget. I know there's been a lot of material. There is a tremendous amount of more material contained in the appendices. And if we haven't yet addressed any of your questions, we're happy to do so now.
What I'll do at this point is I'll start with our student trustee. We always go there first. If you have questions about the presentation for Amy, but for, I guess it'd be our vice chancellor, and then I'll go to the board members. Okay, so I'll move over to trustee Moreno to see your questions.
I was kind of hoping to be last, but that's, that's okay. No, 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 no. No, 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 that's okay. It's going to be said anyhow. I, I hope everybody notices the contrast in, in tonight's presentation and the material that we've got that describes the condition of each of the colleges. And I want to take everybody back to the night that we had to listen to the public with this house filled that talked about how we were misusing budget funds and how we were coding things differently as we talked about the closure or the reduction of services at the childcare center. That night, everybody accused us of playing with the budget and not doing things appropriately to fund their, their specific issue. But as everybody knows, especially President Suarez, that we were losing money. And it was being used to handle costs that we had not, or the college really had not included when that place started up to help students and employees. So we can see we're doing a good job. I think it's, it's being true. Those individuals aren't here to, to hear the real nuts and bolts of what our staff does to try to make this place float. And I totally understand what you have to go through with this budget process and that it can change on a dime. And you are doing the best you can to keep your crystal ball ready and clear to be able to see things that might be coming towards us. And I appreciate that. You know, having understood and worn out pencils and erasers doing budgets, I appreciate that this is a, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a twenty-seven hour a day job to be able to do this and I appreciate the effort. We're gonna, we're gonna be okay. There may be some bumps in the road, but that just depends on the environment out there and things way beyond our control. So keep up the good work. Thank you.
And I'll go to trustee Prinsky with questions you might have.
Oh, okay. We got the green on. I don't really have any questions. I mean, when I started reading this, I think I started reading it wrongly because I start, I mean, I started with all the data, which made me crazy. You know, and reading, and reading the newspapers, adhering the worst. So I finally got to your presentation, reading the presentation. And I was so relieved because it was comprehensible. I mean, all the, all the tables and so I really appreciate your presentation. And I feel like we're in good hands. I mean, that's, I think that's the bottom line. I'm very worried, of course, about what's going on in Washington and I'm happy to be in California. But, you know, I, I think we're, you know, you, our staff, you know, chancellor, vice chancellors, you know, the, the VPs of administration of the colleges. I think you've, you've set us up as well as possible given what's going on in the world. Yeah, so no questions, just a really expression of appreciation.
I'll move to trustee Nguyen at this point.
Thank you. I just want to, also no question, but I just want to reiterate my fellow trustees' remarks that, you know, as a new trustee, I'm drinking out of a fire hose for the last, you know, eight months or so. But this was very informative and I just want to thank all the vice presidents along with the fiscal team, really all the teams in the district that made these presentations possible. But even more than that, you know, when, when I first came on, the chancellor talked to me a lot about our budget and him trying his best to instill this culture of everybody having to tie in their bootstraps and making sure that we as a district are fulfilling our fiduciary duty to the taxpayers in this area, making sure that we're, you know, spending efficiently, that we don't go into the red at least so much. But, but, but even in doing so, I see that there's a, a lot of, it is very, are very conservative projections and estimations and that I think in the end it looks like, you know, the numbers are going to come out a little bit better than some of these projections because, you know, we're being so conservative in, in our estimations. But I just, I just, you know, feel that, you know, we're heading in the right direction and, and, and I want to, you know, there was a lot of recognition or credit being passed around this evening and deservedly so. But I just want to really recognize that the chancellor also, him instilling this culture of us, our entire district being fiscally responsible. I think it starts at the top and thank you chancellor for, for, for all that you do. And again, you, you make all of us look good up here. So thank you to everybody for, for all that you do.
Trustee Hornbuckle.
I was just sitting here thinking, this is the twentieth budget that I've looked at. That's a lot and I, I can understand that your comment about drinking out of a fire hose. I remember my first, my first budget year and thinking, this system is funded in such a weird way. And I still think that, you know, there are so many pieces to the puzzle and trying to fit it all together and make it come out with some kind of a positive result at the end. It's, it's an enormous project and I have great admiration for our fiscal staff at all three of the colleges and particularly here at the district to put together this kind of a presentation that is almost understandable and this kind of a presentation that didn't make any sense to me at all. And I agree with trustee Prinsky, the charts and the graphs, my eyes begin to cross after a while. So I thank you all and I echo what my fellow trustees have said. I thank you very much for the hard work that you've done in putting all of this together. And Marlene, thank you so much for your presentation today. It really was very understandable. Not like the first one that I remember, but they've gotten better over the years. So thank you for that. I really don't have any questions because it was all pretty clear. And we'll also have a chance next week to ask more questions. So that's it.
Well, I just want to echo everybody as this is in my fourth decade of doing school, K twelve, K fourteen finance, but this is very different. I have some clarifying questions just because I know when we're doing the fiscal stability plan assumptions and there's been, having been on the budget committee at the college in here, is I do understand that, that the way you've identified and clarified is really important. So I just want to make sure the clarity is, is really exact. So I'm going to hopefully read through the pages of the slide versus our pages. On page nine, there's an amazing net increase to budget. So that's ongoing. These are the stability plans between the net increases in budget. But I know some might be one-time because, you know, as you're, we're trying to roll out to have a. But I know some might be one-time because, you know, as you're, we're trying to roll out to have a much more stable, long-term and erase our infrastructural deficits that have been with us for a while. And yes, thanks to the chancellor being a budget fiscal economy guy, he's like, this is really important. So if you can clarify that with me.
These totals are a combination
She has it up.
of on-time, excuse me, one-time and ongoing. So when we look, for instance, at 2324 with that total of 10.15 million, a portion of that is ongoing and a large portion is one-time. So as we identified one-time salary savings or potentially a one-time revenue that would not have flown, flowed into 2425. And you can see that because 2425's improvement, for instance, from phase one is less than what you see the improvement in 2324. And that's a good indication that not all of the improvement in 2324 was ongoing. Otherwise, 2425 would have been equal to or greater than. So not all of those were ongoing.
Okay, that helps me clarify. Then on page 29 for us, but it's page 28 on the slide deck. I just want to make sure we understand the difference in COLA versus CPI. So, and there is, you know, in your slide deck, CPA, which is a California Consumer Price Index, you show as 2.7%, which is the cost of goods we're paying more of, but we're only receiving 0.23 COLA. Is that correct?
Could you tell me the title of your slide, please?
So the title says Student Center Funding Formula. It's page 28 of the slide deck, I think, or 23 of the slide deck. 23. Go back, 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 back. There we go. So we have the 2.3 is less than the 2.23 is less than 2.3 COLA. But in the slides, you do remark CPI, which is our cost of increasing paying for utilities, gas, all the supplies. Is that correct?
Correct. So the COLA is really unique. The COLA, as it applies to K-14 education and is in the law, is specifically the cost of inflation affecting governments. It is unique to governmental inflation and it is different from the CPI. And when we talk about the CPI, we're talking specifically about the consumer price inflation, which is how we experience it. And the number we use is specific to California. So the COLA is a national inflation affecting governments versus consumer inflation in California. We use the CPI in our projections for our non-labor because that's what we're actually experiencing in real life versus the COLA, which is the number that they're using to increase the rates because that's what the losses they have to use. So when they made the loss, somebody determined that's a good thing to use. It may have no relationship to what we actually experience as an institution in the increase in our costs.
So if I'm just doing napkin math, 0.23 is we're getting, but our cost of non-salary and all the other things is actually 2.4% more than we're gaining. So that's where our budget needs to move things around a little like deficit spending, things that are out of our control, but that's a recognition that you have in the budget of, it's sort of this angst every once in a while over my four decades. Sometimes the CPI was lower than COLA, 8% COLA, CPI was four, and that means there were some gains. But we're anticipating, as trustee Nguyen explained, we're having a very conservative budget because of those differential. Is that true?
Correct, correct. There, there is definitely a difference between the two.
Okay, great, right. Okay, and then the other question I have is our page 35, which is page 29 of the slide deck, is we know we're having this push on our health and wellness benefits. And I know we have this great committee district-wide that's going to be looking and that's why we're changing that third party. I want to thank our HR department and working with the, the district-wide committee. But I do know that is becoming, that's going to, right now you're looking ahead, that that's going to become more of a drain, kind of on our budget because it's out of our hands. So I just want to know the difference of, I heard you correct. It's about $50 million that we pay for this health benefits kind of things as we go, which is there. And that our employees pay subsidized it to 3%. Is that correct?
Correct. So you can see on this slide, I know that it's a busy slide and there's a lot of numbers on here. But there is one number, the bottom line that has the squares around them. It's the subtotal annual premium and increase. And under the total, so not the change, but the total amount is 50,000, excuse me, $50 million. Thank you for the correction, not 50,000.
Fabulous.
50 million. Out of that 50 million, we have, the number of employees in our plan is 1,119 employees. And collectively, their employee contribution for this year is projected to be $1,530,000. 1.5 million dollars. So the remainder is paid by us, which is 48.7 million dollars. We pay about 97 million. The average, 97%, excuse me.
97%.
97%, sorry, my words are dropping. The average employee annual contribution is $1,370.
Which is, okay, so that also is a, is a real concern, especially recently saw the last two years, no one was going to doctors at COVID. You know, so then now everybody's going to the doctors and getting delayed surgeries and things. So that also is a push on our, being able to have the infrastructural deficit go away. We're going to need to really work on that. We don't, I mean, this is me. I like how much our employees receive good quality health benefits. But at this rate, I'm going to turn it back over to HR and this committee to hopefully they can mitigate some of this push. Because this, this to me scares me almost more than the federal government and the freezing where, where everybody's suing everybody to help us. But this is something that's personally impacting us that, that I have some concern about. And then if we go to, I'm sorry, everybody, everybody's tired, but let's see, where did I go? Page 40 of our page, page 34 of the slide deck. The UCLA Anderson Economic Forepass.
Yes.
As I said in our subcommittee, California is experiencing higher unemployment than most every other state, which is a hum to me. But to me, that's where community colleges and potential comes in. And I know the colleges are looking at that going, hmm. Especially in technology, manufacturing, entertainment, logistics and healthcare. I know they're going to take advantage of this in marketing and saying, hey, are you, you know, because that's where our growth can come in since last time this all happened in 2008 to 10, we weren't being paid. So this to me is such a tremendous opportunity for growth and revenue, which is great. So thank you for pointing that out. And I'm sure all of the, the, the community, the, each of our colleges and also Andrea's team really is getting that, that's an opportunity. Absolutely. Let me see. Page 52 of our slide deck, which is 52 of our notebook, 46 of the slide deck. Interesting about EV charging fees. When we first installed them, we were super cheap, like less than cheap. And so I love that we're going to recover actual costs. The other thing I was asking, as we're installing more of these fast chargers, one of the things I just know because I have an electric car and for a while when my house was under construction, I had no way to charge. There is only one super fast charger in a five-mile radius and it's over at the city. Is that one of the planning? Because I do know that is such a huge potential to put in those fast chargers. And I know we have ChargePlus or one of those versus of Tesla and I would prefer having them come to us and pay us. So I'm hoping that's part of the plan is I know Golden West are installing all these great new, you know, solar projects. And I know Coastline, you're looking at things in OCC, but is that also in the plan? Because that is, even though it seems pennies, but that revenue is huge. Why do you think Tesla, just, we were just on a trip and we, every Tesla thing, because I have an adapter, there's 30 to 50 charging. Why do you think they're doing that? They're making a ton of money.
We can certainly explore it. Right now, we only are adding charging stations when we're adding solar panels. Because part of the requirement when you add solar panels is to actually add charging stations. That's part of that process. So when we're adding stations, it's connected to adding solar panels. But we are also replacing the aging charging stations we have, which is good because those things are mighty slow. If you've ever had to try and charge your EV at one of those really old ones. So we can certainly explore that. I do want to add that our updated BPAP, I believe it's in the AP, is allows us to recover our expenses. It's not designed to create revenue above our costs. That's the model we have. The previous fees didn't even recover half of our costs. That's why this was so important that now we are recovering our full costs and we're doing that on an annual basis, that we actually get to rebase the fee every year. So if we have an increase in energy, if we have a decrease in energy, we also rebase it that way. So we're always recovering costs, but the model doesn't have room for.
And I understand that because who's charging is our students, our employees. You don't want, you know, you don't want to have them, but however, that we can recover the cost, that's huge. I mean, that's huge as far as that goes. That's great. So I already went over that. I don't need to go over that again. My question here, I have another question there. And the only other one, and I'm just going to have a comment for my board members. On page 99, which is 90, is it 93? Because I look at, you know, trends and data and I'm looking at, because one of the things we're really working on is our reserves. It's page 99 of our book, which is a comparison. So the, the challenge, I think, we're still ongoing is if you look at us compared to Rancho and North, I don't consider South, that's basic game, that, that's like apples and oranges. But that tells me we're trending in the right direction because we were far more on the left. But I look at that, so, so everybody here knows. And so we really need to keep up the work because we don't know what's happening in the federal government. We don't know what's happening in the state of California. We certainly don't know what all the, everything coming at us, as we've said. And everyone's doing an amazing job of trying to rethink revenues, expenses and things. But I really, our goal should be to move closer to our peers in at least our county. Because we know if they have more funding flexibility, if things really drop out, they'll be able to provide for our students. And I look at this as how are we going to make sure that we keep attracting? Because we have fabulous colleges, I think the best in the county, and we have the most fabulous programs. But if we don't have resources to provide for our students, they will go elsewhere. If we don't have enough, you know, enough savings so that we can protect our student success just as well as our, as our sister, sister district. So, and I'm not even going to go at North, South County, you're kidding. And with that, I just want to echo everything and I appreciate your patience as I ask these, because I'm a, you know, I'd like to understand how things are and assumptions. So I really appreciate everybody here and everybody's patience at this point. And at this point, I'm going to ask for any more last-minute questions or comments. Okay, at this point then, I will ask for a motion for adjournment. And do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, and I'll ask our student trustee first to vote.
Aye.
And the rest of us? Oh yeah, oh, wait, the chancellor, I'm sorry.
Fortunately, we, we have an adjourning motion. We would like to adjourn the meeting in honor of the victims of the shooting at Annunciation Catholic School in Minneapolis. And for Seth Toledo Mendez, a 13-year-old Costa Mesa boy who was gunned down at a gas station at Pico Rivera while he was waiting for his mom to get off work. So with that, I.
I'm sorry, I, I thought we were going to have that for next time. Okay.